Temple City Council, September 21st, and we are starting at 7:38. I am going to call this meeting to order. May we roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara is still trying to log in. Mayor Protem Sternquist? Mayor Yu is absent.
Motion to excuse Mayor Yu for cause?
A second.
Any objections? So moved. My whole screen just went blank.
We can see you and we can hear you.
Okay, here we go. For calling in, your audio will unmute during public comment, and when public comment is open during the item discussion, you can also email your request to speak to city@templicity.us right now, and indicate on the subject line the item which you provide comment to. We move to item three, our invocation. I am pleased to welcome Pastor Jim Walden from First Baptist Church of Temple City, located at 1619 Baldwin Avenue, and he will provide our invocation this evening. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, yeah, let's pray. Father, this is so great to get together again, and I love this council, I love this city, I love the leadership you have, and Father, you've been so good to us, and you have given us these leaders who have given up their time in their lives to help, and I just ask again that you would bless them richly with wisdom, Lord, that you would protect Temple City, and you would continue to be so good to California. Father, thank you for loving us, and we look for you to continue to do more and more. Thank you for this night, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Jim. We move to item four, our pledge. If you will stand, and William, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure. Please put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic of which stands as the nation of God.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
We got Councilmember Viscara back.
William, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Oh, I just said, well, we got Councilmember Viscara back.
Oh, great, thank you. Okay, move to item five, ceremonial matters. This is a tough one. Tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize Pastor Jim Walden, Christian student of Temple City, and history community, and the idea to congratulate you on your retirement. Oh, why retire? Because then you're leaving. Pastor Jim Walden was born in Boston, Massachusetts, and grew up in Michigan. Moved to the Midwest, obtained his master's degree in Chicago. He served a church in Illinois as pastor, started a church in Kansas City, was there as pastor for 19 years. He should be there for four years, and has been serving as a senior pastor at First Baptist Church, Baptist Church of Temple City, nine years. His third year, sorry, he's a third generation pastor, and he has four children. He is married to his wife, Deanna, and Joe enjoys playing golf and basketball with his son. Pastor Walden has been a supporter of the city, and someone who can call on and rely on services on me. This is positivity and energy. Personally, I am so honored to call you my friend, and just my soul with everything that you have done for this committee, and will continue to do your prayers for us. And we will keep you and your family in our prayers, and you know that you always have a home here in Temple City. So Pastor Walden, we have a certificate of recognition, and that will be coming your way soon. And I know, I know our council members have some things they'd like to share with you, so Councilmember Chavez, will you share with us?
Thank you. Well, you know, this is one of those events of mixed emotions. I'm so very, very happy for you that you are finally retiring, you're gonna get to enjoy life, little pressure on you, and I know that you and Deanna are gonna have a great time in your retired life. And so I wish you nothing but the best, and also Jane, who's sitting here beside me, certainly sends her best wishes to both of you as well. But of course, the mixed emotions is that we're going to lose you. You have been such a pillar in our community over the years. It's just, I mean, to go, it'd be hard to go through the list of all the things that you've contributed. Of personal, and personal, of course.
Brian sent a message saying he can hear me.
Okay, so Fernando's talking, I guess, I can hear him, but at any rate.
Peggy, can we?
I just want to tell you, Pastor Walden, that having given me the opportunity to do my state-of-the-city address in your church was one of the highlights of my political career. You were such a gracious host, it was such a great venue, and just all the things, all the events at your church, and your smile, and just your giving nature, we're gonna miss it, and I'm gonna miss it, and hopefully, if we ever get out there, we'll be able to reconnect, and as Cindy said, you always have a home here in Temple City, and if you're ever this way, certainly feel free to come by and say hi, so thank you so much, and God bless, and our prayers go with you, of course.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Mann?
Yeah, this is a bittersweet moment for me, too. I mean, ever since I've been so, Pastor Walden, you've, you've been what I consider to be a a model example for everyone in Temple City. And not just because you play such an important part in all of our community events, you work so well with, with us and others to make those positive and great things happen. You know, from Camellia Festival to Miss Temple City, to, the list just goes on and on. Every time I think about those events, I realize it's, it's at First Baptist Church. And so become like this prime location for where so many great things happen. And I think, just from a more personal note, I, I just think you embody the spirit of what I consider to be all the great Christian values that, that we, we should have, and it's inspiring for me, because every time I interact with you or see you in the community, it reminds me, hey, that's someone I want to be striving towards, to become, you know, to achieve that level of character and dedication. So I'm happy for you and your family in your retirement, but I will miss you dearly.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, William. For being here, Councilmember Viscara?
Can you see me?
Yes.
Well, okay. Our paths only crossed periodically, but I was always aware of you, and I've always appreciated the work that you do. I particularly enjoyed your coming to, to our meetings and saying the prayer, and wishing us, the city, the planet, the best. And as William said, you're one of those people that embodies what, the Christian ethic, and, and just a downright good person, and fun to talk to, so I, I will miss not seeing you around here, and best of luck, and by the way, I've been retired for about 10 years, it's, it's a neat thing. You'll enjoy it.
Good, 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 good. Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm still but I think I'm back now. Can, can anybody hear me?
I can hear you.
At times, yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Go ahead, Jim, I'm sorry. Pastor Walden, lead us. Fernando, are you still there?
I'm Mike.
Yeah, I'm here.
Pastor Walden, go ahead.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, you're, you're cutting in and out, it might be on my end. I do not know that I am worthy of such friendship and accolades from all of you. This has been a very emotional decision, because some of the decisions, since I'm only 61, has come because of some heart issues that I have. The cardiologists claim it's not life-threatening, but the day-to-day grind, they think, has been adding stress. The heart itself is good, but the signals and impulses it's getting have not been. And so my wife and I really since May have grieved over this decision. We've loved living here, we have felt loved, this is such a fantastic community, and I just sense the way as I've just wanted to serve this town for the love of the people and the love of Jesus, that I have been so well received, and what, what can I say? You folks are so precious to me, and my wife and I have wept many a night coming up with this decision. We are moving back to the Midwest to live near her mom, and we have other family there, so all I can say is, my goodness, Temple City and all the leaders, we love you and thank you.
Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. The procedure to address the city council is highlighted on the first page of this agenda. This section is limited to 30 minutes total. The city council will now hear the public comments, and for those of you calling in, your audio will now be unmuted. Please state your name, so you can be added to the speaker's list. To avoid callers from speaking over each other, we will call your name to speak. You can also email your request to speak, cityclerk@templicity.us right now, and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment to. Our city clerk, Peggy, do we have any email public comments, or someone wishing to speak?
Yes, Mayor Protem, we do have one. We have asked the public to unmute their audio if they wish to speak at this time, so they could state your name, and we could add them to the speaker list, but we do not have any email public comments or email requests to speak, so we'll turn it over to the caller, so that they could state their name, and we could add them to the speaker's list if they wish to speak. Callers, identify yourselves.
Hi, this is Mayor Protem Valerie Munoz from the city of La Puente.
Thank you. I see one other caller, but their audio has not been muted, I mean, unmuted, excuse me, so Mayor Protem Sternquist, we have Mayor Protem Munoz on the line.
Good evening, Valerie.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, honorable counsel for the great city of Temple City. I would have to say the second best, because I'm obviously biased for the city of La Puente, but hope everyone is well and staying safe during these unprecedented times. The reason why I'm calling is, as you're a representative on the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, I just wanted to personally invite all of the city officials to our San Gabriel Water Quality Authority Special Updates for City Officials, which will be held on Tuesday, October 5th, at 12:00 PM. It is an online webinar. Topics include local reliability in times of drought, updates on the San Gabriel Valley groundwater remediation projects that are currently going throughout the San Gabriel Valley, and also updates on local Prop 68 and federal funding moving forward in our community. As y'all are aware, back in 1993, the Telepoint State Legislature created the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, with the sole purpose is to ensure clean drinking water in our basin. With over 81 tons of contaminations removed till this day, and over $500 million in secured settlements going towards remediation, our goal is to just continue to provide advocacy towards clean water efforts, as well as just provide general updates to our great local officials, such as yourself, so that you're aware of what's going on in the San Gabriel Basin. Overall, overall, our goal is to lower cost of public cleanup projects that have been delayed for years, and the Water Quality Authority has aggressively pursued outside funding from responsible parties and federal and state governments to ensure that we continue to clean our basin. Especially during the time where we have the discussion and hot topics of drought, that's just in the horizon, we want to make sure that we're providing just general information and updates to our local officials and regarding some of these topics of discussion. So I hope that all of you guys, your city manager and staff, would be present for our update, which will be hosting on Tuesday, October 5th, at noon. It's around a 45-minute presentation with questions that we can answer at the end. Hope every one of you has a great evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I will also be sending out another email tomorrow morning with the information to register and hope to see you then. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Okay, we are moving to item seven, our, oh, did we have another speaker, Peggy, I'm sorry?
Mayor Protem, we have another caller, but they have not chose to unmute to speak, and we do not have any email requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. We move to item seven, consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion, as recommended, unless removed for further discussion. Do we have?
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar?
Oh, certainly.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem and councilmembers, I just wanted to bring to your attention that for consent calendar item 7E, it's the approval of final map. The staff report is correct, everything was, the description and title is correct, we just updated the attachment with parcel map for that item, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, so we'll be approving it with that update, correct?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, can we have that motion again? I'm sorry, was that Tom?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second?
Okay.
Okay, any objections? So moved. We need to have a roll call for this, correct?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
We have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Yes. Okay, that motion is approved unanimously. We move to I'm trying to get up here. Item eight, public hearing, none, unfinished business, none. Item 10, new business. Adoption of resolutions calling for the March 8, 2022 general municipal election, and regulations and approval of election-related services. And our city clerk is going to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Tonight, the item before you is pertaining to the city's upcoming general municipal election on March 8, 2022. For the city's charter, our general municipal elections are conducted on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in March of even number of years. In preparation for the 2022 election, it is necessary for the council to adopt a resolution calling for the election on March 8, 2022. Adopt a resolution requesting election-related services from Los Angeles County, and adopt a resolution establishing candidate statement regulations for candidates pertaining to statement of qualifications submitted to the voters. To conduct the city standalone election, staff presents two options for council's consideration. One is to direct staff to conduct the standalone election utilizing various election support services with the cost of $222,100, or to conduct with Los Angeles County Clerk to conduct the city standalone election by providing full election services with the cost of $439,000. The city's general municipal election will follow the traditional model of accepting mail ballots and providing voters the option to vote in person at their designated precinct. The difference between city conducting the election versus the county conducting the election is that with the county conducting the city's election, after staff assists potential candidates during the nomination period, county will take over all aspects of the election. Staff has evaluated both options and is recommending that city council direct staff to conduct the standalone election with approval of agreements for election-related support services. Nomination period begins on Monday, November 15, 2021, and ends on Friday, December 10, 2021, unless an incumbent does not file. Then the nomination period is extended to Wednesday, December 15, 2021. Those interested in pulling nomination papers can contact the city clerk's office to schedule an appointment, and appointments will take approximately 45 minutes to an hour. There's no fee to pull nomination papers, but qualified candidates are responsible for the translation and printing costs of their candidate's statement if they choose to include one in the voter information pamphlet. And with that, I'm available to answer your questions. Mayor Protem Sternquist, you are muted.
Sorry. Councilmember Mann, any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
Councilmember Viscara?
Peggy, what you're recommending is our usual process, right?
Correct.
Good. No other questions?
Councilmember Chavez?
No questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions either. Peggy, do we have any email public comments?
Mayor Protem Sternquist, there are no email public comments or email requests to speak, and we will ask the callers to unmute their audio if they wish to make a comment. The caller has not unmuted their audio.
Okay. So we are going to close public comments if there are any final questions from council, now's the time. Anyone? Okay, may we have a council motion, please?
Mayor Protem Sternquist, I make the following motion, that we adopt Resolution Number 21-5553, calling the election for March 8, 2022, and that we adopt Resolution Number 21-555, establishing candidate statement regulations for candidates pertaining to statement of qualifications submitted to the voters, and that we direct staff to conduct a standalone traditional model general municipal election and improve the following professional services agreement to provide election support services. First, the Los Angeles County Register Recorder, County Clerk, to provide election-related services for the term October 1, 2020 to May 1, 2022. And that we retain heart interactive for ballot design, tabulation software, equipment, and associated services in the amount of $55,000 for the term October 1, 2021 to May 1, 2022. And that we retain ProVote solutions for ballot production, print and mail services in an amount of $70,000 for the term 2021 to October 2022. And lastly, that we appropriate an additional $69,280 to the election budget, for a total of $221,100.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any objections?
Roll call again, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
My apologies, go ahead.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Yes, Peggy, I want to thank you for your willingness to do this. You do such a great job, so we have all the faith in you. So I'm, we're all very grateful that we're moving forward with you doing our election.
You know, I, I think the first election that I ran in, in 2009, I believe the cost was under, under $70,000, wasn't it, Peggy, probably? Time has changed, haven't we? Wow. Amazing, alright, thank you.
It's a supply chain problem.
Yeah, I guess so. Blame it on COVID. Everybody else does.
Alright, we move to item B, a memorandum of agreement between the San Gabriel Valley Council and the city of Temple City for participation in the San Gabriel Valley Regional Food Recovery Plan. And that is going to be our city manager and our management analyst, who is?
Ashley Avery, and I will, will be here, and Ashley will be able to answer any questions as well. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Protem, and members of the council. Before you today is a, one of the other steps in implementing SB 1383. Earlier this year, you went through a complete revision of your franchise agreement for waste hauling, which included an organics material, a recycling program. The other step in the SB 1383 compliance process is including those food generators or organic waste generators, and they're primarily rest, larger restaurants and grocery stores, to ensure that actual recovery of edible food for human consumption is part of that recycling or reuse process. By 2024, I believe, 20% of all edible food, or excuse me, all organic waste should be through the recycling process to be reused as edible food for, to food banks and others. This is a significant endeavor that many cities are not equipped, there's about 15 cities in the San Gabriel Valley COG who are initially part of this memorandum of, and joint kind of participation effort. The COG only received one response to the, to the request for proposals, SCS. While the scope of work is not in the MOU itself, you have attached the RFP that lays out some of the scope of work, which I know is not as traditional as you're used to, but the, really, this is a very technical issue to deal with, all, so this vendor would be going out, working with the generators of organic waste that meet their criteria in terms of what the state is requiring, so that we can get to that 20% threshold by 2024. The reason why most cities are going this direction is more, most small cities like ours, like we have deferred in that organic recycling responsibility to Athens for residential and commercial. This is an additional step in this process. SCS will work with each of the vendors and each of the participants in the city. What we will come back with in the future is some of the costs related to enforcement. That is an annual cost that CalRecycle actually works with each city, and the city is responsible for this mandate at the end of the day, similar to the manner in which they were responsible for the SB 1383 organic and recycling requirements that we worked with, with Athens, with the restated agreement. If there's any questions about this step, in terms of the burden on staff, this is a way to not only relieve the burden on staff, but something that Ashley, Ms. Avery is very good and has some expertise on the waste hauling side, but this is even a more specialized Uh, service that, um, again, represented by the fact that the COG only got one, one response. To their request for proposals. The other, the other element of this real quickly is that during your, um, discussions and the. Eventual adoption of the restated. A franchise agreement, we slightly increased what are called AB nine thirty-nine fees. AB nine thirty-nine fees are meant to assist in the implementation. And execution of these recycling and organic recycling type programs. So. Um, it was a good thing that we increased those fees just very slightly. So that we can actually pay for these types of programs going forward. Um, Ashley, if unless I've missed anything, um, let me know. Uh, and, uh, we're, we're here for any questions.
Thank you. Is Ashley on?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Did you want to add anything, Ashley?
Uh, no, I believe the city manager pretty much covered everything.
Okay, next time we're gonna let you do it, Ashley.
All right.
Brian too much.
That's the truth.
Okay, we are going to open public comment.
We have, uh, council comment, our council questions first.
I know you don't have any questions, Tom.
Yeah, I do.
Go.
I, I have a real simple question. Okay, so. In layman's terms, what is this? Are we trying to save? Food that has been thrown away for other people to eat? Is that what we're doing? Uh. I, I don't quite understand what this is really all about.
I'll, I'll punt, I'll, since I'll punt that to Ms. Ash, Ms. Avery for a moment.
Because it doesn't sound very, it doesn't sound very appealing, but, uh, maybe in the long run it is. So. What exactly are we doing here?
Ms. Avery, do you want to go over real briefly? Because she's, Ms. Avery's been part of all the conversations with the COG. So, Ms. Avery, do you want to go through just real briefly, uh, the question from council member Chavez?
Sure. Um, so essentially, yes, that's correct. It's trying to capture food that is. Perfectly fine for consumption that would otherwise be thrown away. Uh, it's, so the purpose of a bill is supposed to connect. Uh, connect the food recovery. Institutions such as nonprofit organizations and churches with the generators such as restaurants and. Grocery stores. Um, the infrastructure is not, well, hasn't been there in the past. So the purpose of SB thirteen eighty-three is to build that infrastructure and build those relationships with. The generators and those who would distribute the food to people who need it.
Hey, you know that when I read this, it reminded me of the Seinfeld episode. When they were trying to get rid of the muffin stumps and nobody would want them. That's what it reminded me of. So I, I hope that's not what we're doing here, but it sounds like it's a bigger and better program. And I can understand. So apparently, the, uh, the. Uh, it's, it's, it's to allow the city to use their, the COG's resources to get this food. To like, maybe homeless shelters and people who would probably use it, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right. Appreciate it.
Council member man? Any questions?
May, maybe more questions that I would like, but, uh. Uh, so the, um. You mentioned the bill is to create this infrastructure to connect those two, two different entities. Uh, is, is it safe to assume that when we're talking about? Um. The generators, we're talking about supermarkets? I mean, this, this, I have a hard time imagining this would include like restaurants and dining.
Right, it would be large generators like grocery stores, um, maybe a really large restaurants, not your mom and pop typically. They don't generate enough, uh, to be required to do this.
Okay, so, so the actual infrastructure as in the. Sorting and collecting and identifying of food that will fall into this category, that's on. The supermarket to create that, right? That, that's, the, the city has, and we, we have no part in. Organizing that effort. We're just saying you gotta do it.
Right. Right, yes.
Okay. Uh, let me go down my list here. So, uh, just, just to clarify, in the staff report, it mentions we get fifty-four thousand annually in AB nine thirty-nine funds. So. I guess back to city manager Cook's point, that's, that's really the, the money you're talking about as part of the recent, recent franchise agreement with Athens. That's not money coming from the state, right?
That's correct. That's money coming from the ratepayers. That was before that, that AB nine thirty-nine fee was already instituted prior to the most recent. Restated agreement was up just a little bit because we knew these types of programs could be coming down, that would be coming down the pike. And, uh, so yes, that's, it's not coming, it's, it's user-generated.
Okay. So what, what would, um, in, in the agreement, we've identified. You know, a contact person from our side as well as the COG side. Um. I guess what would be our role exactly if the consultants during the outreach and during the. I'm guessing that the consultant is also collecting the data that's necessary for reporting guidelines to the, to the state. Um, there, there was one bit in there that says, um. On our and the city, we have to respond to data requests. But I, I just wasn't. What I'm trying to get at is what, what's our role in this entire process?
Uh, essentially, that is our role. It's just to, uh, be cooperative with the consultant if they ask for a list of businesses. Or, um, any kind of information that the city would have. Uh, and to work with them. Um, other than that, it would be to report to the meetings that, that the COG organizes. So they can report on their findings or any issues they might be having in. Um, but essentially that, that would pretty much be the city's role, at least from the staff's perspective.
Okay. And, and my next question is maybe more about the inspection side, which I know is going to be brought back, I guess, later. At a later date, but I, I guess. If we don't have to answer now, don't worry about it. I, I'm just kind of curious since. It explicitly states that the COG and the consultant has no power to issue citations. I presume that has to involve us. And so I was just trying to imagine. I mean. Logistically, how would that look like? Um. But if we don't know, then, then I'll, I'll, I'll save that for maybe, maybe next time.
I would have, it is most likely would work the. Similarly to how we deal with other contractors, you don't have the authority to. You know, cite people, but the, they would notify the city or myself. That, uh, someone is not participating or they aren't doing what the law requires of them. And then we would, uh, enforce, use, I guess, using code enforcement to cite them from the city. The contractor just can't do it themselves.
Okay. And, uh, my last one is maybe a bit more technical in nature. Um, since the goal of SB thirteen eighty-three is to reduce. The, um, disposed surplus food by twenty percent. What is that? Do we know what that twenty percent is measured from? Like, what's, what's that baseline reference point that the state is looking at?
That I do not have the answer to. Uh, he's not right in front of me. I know a lot of the, the baselines for organic waste and things like that were based on, uh. Disposal from previous years. Uh, but I don't know about the food recovery since this is a, a brand new. As far as I, as far as I know, it's a brand new, uh, program. It's nothing that the state hasn't implemented before. So I don't know where those numbers come from. I'd have to look into that for you.
Okay. Thank you. That's my, all my questions.
Okay, council member Viscara? Fernando? Is, did we lose him, Brian?
I see him, I see his name on the screen, but I see it's muted as well. Your staff consists.
Council member Chavez? Do you have any other?
No, I already. Asked my questions. Thank you.
Okay, um, I don't have any questions. So, let's see if we can get Fernando to unmute.
You, you could go to the public, sir, and then bring it back. He could ask any questions, uh, after the public has spoken.
Okay, let's do that. So we are going to open public comment.
I'm, I'm back, Cindy.
Oh, okay. Do you have any comments?
No, I, no, I. I'm a little confused, but I think, uh, the questions were the appropriate ones. That's it.
Okay. What, what are, what are you confused about?
The, the, the program. That's okay. Not to worry.
Maybe Ashley can reach out to you. And help you go through some of the, um, things you have questions about, Fernando.
Okay.
All right. Yes. If, unless you want her to do it now.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I don't trust this computer. I don't trust my, my electronics here. Everything keeps going out.
Yeah, it seems everybody is having challenges this evening. Let's move to public comment.
Mayor Protem Sternquist, no callers on the line, and there are no email requests or email public comments.
Okay, so we're going to close public comment. And are there any final questions from council members?
I don't have any questions, maybe more of a comment. This seems to be another one of these, uh. Regulations that the state has decided to push on to the cities. Um, without too much direction, fortunately, we're able to rely on the COG to, I guess, help us in meeting. Whatever these requirements and deadlines are. Um, it would have seemed to me, and I don't know, I mean, for, for, for twenty percent, that doesn't seem to be a whole lot. Uh, and it seems to be a lot of money to be spending. In trying to get another twenty percent of what would otherwise be thrown away into the hands of, I suppose, people who are going to. Consume these, um, these food items, but, uh, it would appear to me that, uh. Up to now, I, I mean, I know when I go to the grocery store, I see Albertson's. Already giving away a lot of their stuff to organizations on their own. Um, my question or concern would be what? What effect do those types of actions have on our duty to comply? Is that going to be counted? Or not counted in this so-called twenty percent?
Council member Chavez, that is what the, that's what the consultants will be working with each of the generators for, to kind of, um.
They will, they're the ones who will go to Albertson's and say, uh, you need to give us this. Disposable and then we'll deal it out rather than going directly to whoever they want to give it to.
Not necessarily, but just qualifying and quantifying it from a reporting standpoint that's dealt with.
Yeah. All right, well, good luck to them. I, uh, hopefully the, those in the state legislature, uh. Know what they're doing, uh, and they'll, we'll see it come to fruition.
Or not.
Okay.
Or not. Yes. Thank you. So.
All right, can we get a council motion?
Uh, Cindy, can, can I make a, Mayor Protem, can I make a brief comment as well?
Of course, of course.
Yeah, so I, I think I, I agree with council member Chavez. It seems. It seems like everyone's just kind of flying by the seat of their pants. We're trying to meet these new state regulations, so. But, um, I, I, I did have one, one other quick question. So if, if I'm reading the staff report correctly, the, the, uh, there's an initial cost. For the consultant to do all the outreach and education. And then there is the subsequent cost that we're estimating that will not explore annually, and that's for inspection. Is, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I think my, my main comment would just be, I mean, I, I'd be more curious to see how the whole. Logistics of inspection enforcement works, because. I mean, we're, we're a small city, so we, we have to, we have to contract certain things out. But how that interfaces with, you know, our responsibility as an agency to be the ones issuing citations and. How much time does that take away from our staff? That is obviously busy doing other things. I mean, I, I'd be kind of curious to see what, what that impact would be on, on our operations. Hopefully not, not a lot. Um. So, so that, that's one of my concerns. My, my second concern is, I'm, I'm never a big fan of. Of, um, approving something based on only an RFP, um. I mean, in, in, in the, in what the COG has given us, they just gave us a one-page letter saying. We evaluated the proposal from SCS engineers and we approve it. Well, if they only got one proposal, I guess they have no choice, right? But at the same time, I, I, I guess we should, the COG should have. Uh, give the courtesy of seeing what the actual. Scope of work that SCS submitted to them, so we, we know kind of what, what it is and how it matches with, with the COG's expectations. Um, I don't think it, just how I, you know, I, I agree that this needs to be done and this is probably the best way to do it. Uh, but I think as a matter of documentation, I think we should reach out to the COG and ask for that.
And Mayor Protem, I just have a follow-up question based on what William has brought up. What does, uh, what do we use AB nine thirty-nine funds on? I know that the report says that we collect about fifty-four thousand annually. And, uh, we currently have a fund balance of six hundred and twenty-nine, six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. What do we use these funds for besides something like this?
This will be the first times in the seven years I've been here that we'll have, we have, we'll have used the AB nine thirty-nine funds.
What can they be used for besides programs like this?
This, uh, uh, I can either let, uh, Susan, Ms. Pagaras or Ms. Avery can kind of speak to that a little bit more, but, um, they are. In order to effectuate and implement, um, state mandates related to, uh. Recycling, CalRecycle programs and what is mandated under SB thirteen eighty-four, eh, thirteen eighty-three.
So would this tie into what we're doing with, uh, Athens and? And all those things that we've been doing? Is that? Is that money used for something like that as well?
I'll, and Ms. Avery, please jump in, um. There is some, there is some overlap, but you got to think of what the. The agreement that you did related to organics, uh, for residential and commercial somewhat separate to this program, even though they're part of the same bill. Is that a? Ms. Avery, is that a good way to, or do you have a better way of explaining that?
Uh, yeah, that's pretty much, um, accurate. It's just that, uh, food recovery is. It's not really related to solid waste. So it's a completely different industry. Um, so I know that Athens may not have the staff that would be an expert in food waste recovery. Um, AB nine thirty-nine funds can be used for anything that, uh, helps the city implement programs related to. The nineteen eighty-nine AB nine thirty-nine bill.
Which is what?
The AB nine thirty-nine bill, it's really to, um, implement education. The outreach and recycling program. Sorry, this is a Susan Parag, uh, Director of Admin Services. So. It's more, um, to comply with the recycling program that the state has. Which includes this recycling of the food waste.
It, it appears based on representations of Mr. Cook that. For the last seven years, we haven't been spending any of this money. It's just been, I presume, sitting in the bank accruing interest and now. This, these new regulations come along and. And, uh, we're going to start spending it, although it's really kind of still unclear to me. How much all of this is going to cost. I guess it remains to be seen. What this inspection program is going to cost and we'll revisit that later on down the road. It could cost up to forty thousand dollars a year just for the inspection program. And I'm assuming that, uh, that means that the other program, the, the rest of it is about twenty grand. So that's about sixty grand a year could be. Where we're only getting fifty-four annually. So we're going to start eating into this six-twenty-one, I'm assuming, at some point in time. And I would, to me, it's like, I wasn't really familiar with these funds particularly. I'm sure we've discussed them at some point. But you would think that maybe we should start spending some of this money before the state decides, as they have in the past, to take it away from us?
We have not been requested to return the funds, and we have not had any recycling program. So other cities have used these funds that they receive to possibly have those glue bins in the offices or have given those recycling bins to the community. That's what the city that I used to work for did with our AB 939.
We used to have, we used to have recycling bins around town. I don't see those anymore. Would these funds cover something like that, where people could go and drop off their things in these recycling bins?
Yes, they can, but I'm not sure how the Athens trash program.
No, no, I'm talking about the clothing and things like that that we used to have around town. I don't see those anymore, though.
I don't believe.
That has nothing to do with this. This only has to do with food items, I'm assuming.
Food items and trash or paper.
Trash.
Yeah.
Well, it opens my eyes. It said, we got $600,000 sitting around there doing nothing. Maybe we should find something to do with it. My concern is that, as we have seen in the past, when state legislators find that you have money sitting around and you're not doing with it, anything with it, they tend to take it away. And that would certainly not be something we would want to see down the road sometimes.
I would suggest, Councilmember Chavez, that staff come back to us within 30 days and let us know what options we have available to us to spend that money, not just to spend it lightly, but maybe there's some things there that we should be spending on, and maybe check with some other cities and see what they're doing. Susan mentioned one. And come back with us with some ideas. I agree. I mean, I don't think it's going to be long before the state starts dipping into these type of funds. So might as well put them to good use for our city.
I totally agree. I, I think, I see the writing on the wall. It's happened before.
All right, can we get?
All right. Well, I don't want to beat a dead horse here. We're kind of getting off the subject, but yeah, let's, I mean, it sounds like we need to do this. Probably the most economical way for us to do it.
William, was that a motion you started? I heard.
Did I? I didn't hear myself.
I heard someone.
I'll make, I'll move that we authorize the city manager to sign and execute the memorandum of agreement, attachment A, with the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments for participation in the San Gabriel Valley Regional Food Recovery Program.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any objections? So Luke, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Yes. Okay, that motion has passed unanimously. We move to item 11, an update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll be very brief tonight. Thank you to Ms. Avery, and thank you to Ms. Paragus for following up on many of the issues related to AB 939 and the program, and more will be coming to you soon. So thank you for that. Real briefly, related to COVID-19 numbers, the numbers are looking good, but we are still what would be considered a high transmission community. Most of the state of California is. There's only a few counties that have gone below the high transmission rates, even though the trend over the last few days has been very positive. We, with your, with your, with your, with the positivity rate and the case rate, we are still trending towards moderate, but it's still in the high transmission rate for now. Greg, Mr. Murphy will go over a couple items, one of which is related to COVID-19 and virtual meetings, which we may, we ask the council and the mayor to call a special meeting on next week as well. So with that, Mayor Protem, I will turn it over. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I have an update from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will keep this brief just for technological reasons. I guess my mic has been rough tonight. As the council probably knows, Senate Bills 9 and 10 were adopted, as we discussed last time. We're signed by the mayor late last week. A study session has been scheduled for 6:00 PM on October 5th, before your next regular meeting, at which time Mr. Reimers and myself will go through some of the details of what that means for the city and have some options in terms of moving forward and addressing what, in particular, what Senate Bill 9 may mean for single-family residential communities like those that make up most of Temple City. There is not, as yet, any litigation against the passage of Senate Bill 9. There does appear to be a movement starting that would put an initiative on the ballot in 2022 that would essentially gut Senate Bills 9 and 10 and return that local control to local jurisdictions. But we'll keep an eye on that. And again, as I say, 6:00 PM on October 5th, we'll have a large briefing. Also, Assembly Bill 361 was signed. It's effective immediately, and it makes changes to the way that we can hold Zoom meetings like this, technological meetings. Governor issued an executive order today that allowed us to continue to hold our meeting tonight this way instead of the way that AB 361 would require. As Mr. Cook said, he'll be talking to you to see whether we want to keep going with, keep using technology to hold our meetings beginning in October. And if so, then we'll need to hold a special meeting to adopt a resolution that makes findings that are required by Assembly Bill 361 in order to have meetings stay virtual. So you'll be hearing from Mr. Cook or Ms. Flores on that at some point in the very near future. You have the meeting, then we'll walk through all of the findings at that time so that you fully understand what the findings mean and also what it means. There will be some slight tweaks to the meetings if we go that route, one of which will be that instead of the, the video format that we currently use, the format that the people will see is what you see in front of you with the boxes for all of us, and all of the key decision-makers and presenters will, will be live to, to the, the people watching at home. So instead of a lot of, you know, people with, instead of seeing a lot of names, you'll see a whole bunch of faces. So that's, that's one key change. There are several others, but we'll go through those if we do indeed have a meeting on that. And that is my report tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Hey, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any? Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Cook, quick question. On item C, future development of city properties, is the report on the temporary library going to them first? I mean, it's been quite some time.
The temporary library or the reconstructed library?
The old chamber site.
Yes, we, we have not had, we have not presented that to them yet. We were going to talk to, we're going to have one-on-one discussions with the council first, and then we can bring that back to the standing committee for sure.
Okay, when are we going to start those council sessions? Because it's been months since that would be on an agenda. So can we move that forward as quickly as possible?
Yeah, our office will, our office will start booking those appointments with each council member.
Okay, um.
I have, I have a question regarding the, the ad hoc. What's going on with the city-based homeless plan standing committee? I haven't, it's been, we formed this back in March, and I don't know that we've had any, any reports or anything regarding the progress or what is going on with that meeting, that committee.
Tom, we just, we just met a couple of days ago.
Was there something to report?
The presentation from Tini on that. It's a pretty kind of lengthy.
Well, the reason I brought it up, the reason I brought it up is because we did get some, a report from Tini. I don't know if that was as a result of this standing committee, or if that's the recommendation of staff to the standing committee. I just, I'd like to just kind of know where we stand with, with the standing committee versus, I guess, what is being presented to us by staff. Is there any connection there?
Right. We have another meeting that we haven't set in the calendar with Fernando and I to next week to get some more information. So if we would just hold on for a couple more weeks, then we can bring back a more thorough report because the questions and concerns we had will be answered by them.
Well, and the reason I bring it up is because I still, I still get emails from the people.
Samuel?
Yeah, what is their group? I believe it's the
Coalition.
Temple City Coalition, I believe. And I noticed in the staff report from Ms. Chan that this homeless, and again, this is through the COG, I guess, again, as well, through their homeless programs, that we're going to be, or we're being asked to invest $125,000 in this program, and that it sounded to me like maybe some of this is going to be going to that coalition. But I don't know, maybe there's more to follow, I guess. But.
If, if you wouldn't mind waiting for the, the next council meeting, and I think it would be important for Tini to come and present the, what she shared with us to the whole council. So Brian, can we schedule her to do that?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about meetings? Okay, item 14, council item separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Viscara?
Um, I really don't have anything, but I just happened to think, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Didn't Kealan and Heppler meet with Adam on Primrose?
I believe they did. And Adam, is there, briefly, is there anything to mention?
Yes, we did meet last week regarding the Primrose Park art project, and I have an email out for the subcommittee. Councilmember Viscara, I can connect with you either after the meeting or tomorrow, but we were looking at two dates with the subcommittee so we can bring back that information, and then hopefully have a decision made that we can bring back to council sometime in October.
Okay, so it's premature right now?
Not that it's premature, but we just wanted to meet with the subcommittee one more time before we take it to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you. So apparently, from what I've heard, we're going to be scheduling a special meeting next week to discuss how we're going to move forward with our council meetings. Is that correct?
We would need to, for, as Mr. Murphy briefly stated about AB 631, that would require for you to make some findings to continue on a rolling 30-day basis. So it's not, it's not continuously. It would be every 30 days, you would authorize the ability and make the findings that virtual meetings would continue for, and you can make those findings for the council and all the commissions and boards as well. So, but we need to make that before the October 5th meeting.
Who makes the final determination as to whether we go back live meetings? Is it you? Is it us? Is it Mr. Murphy? Is it the Pope? I don't know. I mean, who's?
It's not me, and it's not the Pope. I can guarantee you those two things. It's a combination of the state of California and the city council. If the state of California, and I should amend that, if the state of California or the county of Los Angeles calls a state of emergency, then the city council can make findings that the state of emergency is such that your meeting should be held virtually rather than in person. You cannot do it on your own without that state of emergency being in place by one of those other authorities. On the other hand, even if there is a state of emergency, you can say that you still want to meet in person. So it's that combination. There's a legal framework that has to be in place. If it's in place, then the five of you make the call.
And the reason I bring it up is because I've been kind of taking an informal survey of other cities, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears that we're basically the only city in the close proximity that is still meeting virtually, at least as far as I know. In fact, in talking with council members this last weekend down at Contract Cities, some of these cities have been meeting for months and months, but live. Now, of course, there are arguments for and against that. To my understanding, in being in City Hall, that we already are set up to take precautions. There are, there are partitions that are set up, there are seats that are, are, you know, not, you can't sit in. I mean, I just, I mean, after tonight, I mean, this is a struggle, and it's getting worse. And I don't think it does the city any good. Certainly doesn't do us any good. I, I'm very frustrated. I can't, I can't hear half of you half the time, and I'm sure most of you are going through the same thing. But, you know, when are we going to go back into City Hall? And, and can't we take the necessary precautions to do so? It appears that, that other, other cities are already doing it and have been doing it for quite a long time. So, I mean, who makes that decision? I mean, is that, is that something that we're going to discuss this next week? That, yes, we will continue being virtual, or no, we're going to go back in? I mean, even JPIA, who is our risk manager, we're meeting live, okay? Of course, we take the necessary protocols, but, you know, they're meeting live as well. And, and so at some point, I think I would like to have some discussion as to, you know, what we as a council want to do. And I can understand that if there's certain staff that have a reluctance to maybe coming live to these meetings, I'm sure we can accommodate them. I know that as far as JPIA is concerned, we not only meet live, but we also allow people to still participate virtually as well, which doesn't seem to be overly burdensome. So, I mean, I don't know how other, my fellow council members feel about it, but I think as a, as a body, we need to sit down and discuss, you know, what direction we're going to go at some point. And hopefully, that's something that we can discuss next week, whether that's the purpose of the meeting or not. I don't know, Mr. Murphy, is it, or is it not?
Two thoughts, sir. One, yes, that would be the purpose of the meeting, would be to have that discussion, and the resolution would be in front of you for your adoption if you wanted to stay virtual. Second, just for everybody else, Councilmember Chavez has made comments down this line. I would ask that the other three of you not respond with your own thoughts on it. Certainly, if you respond individually to Mr. Cook, and it becomes very apparent to him that a meeting is not even necessary, then we simply won't have a meeting, and your first regularly scheduled meeting of October would happen physically at, at the council chambers because you wouldn't have made findings to, to keep yourselves virtual. But yes, sir, the, the purpose of the meeting next week would very definitely be to introduce the topic to you, let you walk through it, let you ask questions, give comments, and then make your decision as to whether you want to make those findings or not.
Greg, I have a question?
Yes, sir.
If we elect to do it, it is, is whether or not there's an audience optional, or is an, is an audience automatic? Or is an, is an audience automatically allowed to come to the meetings?
The audience would have to be allowed in the meeting if you were to meet at city hall. Uh, one of the issues that would be in front of you is whether, uh, having an audience in city hall creates too much of a risk. That, that would be one of the things that you would be discussing and ultimately making findings on.
Can we require vaccination proof to attend the meeting live?
Thank you for the question. We'll think about that and bring that back to you. Absolutely. I, I don't know the answer right now, but that's something I will look up before we talk. Absolutely.
But we don't know about next month yet, whether or not a state of emergency will still be in place, right?
One is in place right now. And until it is, uh, withdrawn by executive order or by, uh, legislation, it remains in place. And that's.
Okay.
One. And so we know that it's still going to be here, uh, because the governor has, has not made any indication he's going to withdraw it and neither is the legislature.
Are the state legislators meeting live or are they online?
As I recall, I have seen both, uh, and I do not know what they're doing, uh, right now. I, I can say, um, actually, I, I do know what they're doing right now. They're not doing anything right now. The legislative session is finished. Uh, many of them are still in Sacramento doing other work, but their regular legislative sessions where all of them fill the houses are, are complete for the year.
I don't have anything, I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Mann?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I know with, with a lot going on, it's kind of easy to lose track of, um, uh, for, for me, I lose track of time, but it, this so happens today is, uh, is the Mid-Autumn Festival for, for those who do celebrate it. Um, and, you know, speaking of in-person and, and not in-person events, um, this always reminds me of the time when we, we had, uh, partnered with the World Journal to do a Mid-Autumn Festival here in the city. Um, and I'll, I'll be honest, I, I miss those events where we're, we're able to, uh, gather. Uh, and so, I mean, happy Mid-Autumn Festival for those who celebrate it. And, um, yeah, I really don't have to, to, to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any, uh, thing else that I can think of. I had something, but I lost, it went, went away. Anyway, um, are there any other public comments? Items not listed on the agenda, Peggy?
Mayor Protem, do you know callers on the line? And there are no email requests to speak or email public comments?
Okay, thank you. I would, I don't know, let me see what I have in here. I'm turning the video off because, um, staff shared that if I have my video on, that the, my voice is very choppy. But, uh, I would like to take this opportunity to adjourn this meeting in honor and memory of Cameron Fish, who passed away a few days ago. He was a lieutenant with the LA County Sheriff Department. And he was son, uh, was the son of council member and a past mayor, Annette Fish. We are heartbroken and offer our sincere condolences to Nan, his sister Laney, and to the entire family. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.